Good morning. Welcome to the second monthly meeting, regular meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public meeting, not a public hearing. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you entered the meeting room on my left, in addition to a set of the materials that are before the board today. Item number two on the agenda is approval of minutes, and we have meeting minutes from May 11th, the regular meeting. Are there any proposed changes, corrections, or modifications to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve them? They've been moving the second. All in favor? These are also good minutes. Like all minutes, they do give the chronology of the actions on the charter discussion. Item number three is updates. For those who do not regularly attend Board of Selectmen meetings, the Town Charter specifies that the Board should hold one meeting per month and that the first selectman should update the fellow selectmen on activities that have taken place between the last time that they met. And there are a number of activities I like to highlight, and the reason I do so is to really give additional spotlight to the many community organizations that provide enrichment to our town. So bear with me as we go through what appear to be just a chronology of happenings that we've attended, but also, again, to emphasize the breadth of organizations here in our town that provide tremendous services. So on May 12th, I was delighted to attend the YMCA's Oyster and Pearl Gala at the Greenwich Polo Club at Conyers Farm. This year's honorees were Randy and Kathy Weisenberger, as well as Michael Chambers. Randy and Kathy Weisenberger are tremendous citizens who gave generously to the establishment of the YMCA pool. And of course, Michael Chambers is a former town leader in the Wetlands Agency who contributes greatly of his time to youth development. So it was a nice evening to pay tribute to the Weisenbergers and to Mike Chambers. On May 16th, the First Selectmen's Diversity Advisory Committee held its annual meeting and announced the winners of the eighth annual diversity writing contest. The students' entries reflected a deep recognition and commitment to combat the adversity faced by many of our students on all levels. I do want to thank Pamela Topper, the committee chair, as well as Alma Rutgers, who was instrumental in establishing the writing contest with me and to get the judges to review these applications and writings and ultimately get them published in the Greenwich Time. If you haven't had an opportunity to do so, I would encourage you to go online, through the Greenwich Time, and look for them because they were very thought-provoking when you consider the nature of the topic, which was essentially centered upon civil discourse in present time and how you're able to express yourself on subjects in light of the environment we're in. The range of responses covered everything from bullying to transgender to the discourse of national political candidates on both parties and how their words impact. So I came away very impressed with the caliber of these young people, and again, across the public and private schools. On May 17th, the Greenwich Girl Scouts held its annual recognition dinner for the gold, silver, and bronze award recipients and graduating seniors. It was held at the St. Lawrence Society, and their keynote speaker was Mary Lee Kiernan. Again, another organization that's fostering youth development and allowing young people to demonstrate their leadership abilities, and we wish them well. On the 17th same evening, the Rowry Club of Greenwich held its 2017 Citizens of the Year Award celebration. Mary Hall was recognized for her work as the founder and executive director of Greenwich Green and Clean, and Charles Hilton was honored for his design work of the 9/11 memorial at Cosco Park and the Rowry Pavilion at Byram Park. Again, Mary and Chuck are the essence of Greenwich and what makes it so special, and we were pleased to be there, John and I, to applaud their recognition, well-deserved. On Saturday, May 20th, the First Baptist Church of Greenwich celebrated its 120th anniversary with a luncheon at the Hyatt Regency Greenwich. It was then followed on Sunday with a special service. Reverend Thomas Nins, as always, gave a very warm and enthusiastic introduction and overview of the history of the church, which was founded by four women. Important to note that, 120 years ago, four women founded the First Baptist Church of Greenwich. And for those who are interested in learning more about it, you certainly can go to their website. I brought back for my colleagues, but also to put out in our reception area their program, which highlights the history of the organization. What they chose to do this year was actually honor people who are not necessarily from their congregation, but who have supported their congregation throughout and have assisted many of their parishioners. And we were very pleased to hear from Dr. Sunil Rana, posthumously Dr. Denny Simons, who actually was a congregant, Mr. Dan Williams, who was a guidance counselor in the Greenwich Public Schools for many years. I actually had Mr. Williams. He's a great, great man. And Katia Mickalidis was also recognized for her work with the Greenwich Hospital Foundation. So they drew upon various parts of the community and incorporated them into that celebration. Later that day, I attended the opening of the Nathaniel Witherell Friendship Garden. This was a culmination of a tremendous amount of effort on the part of the Friends of Nathaniel Witherell and their solicitation of support through garden clubs, through the state Small Town Economic Assistance Grant. For those of you who have not visited, I would encourage you to do so. It is an extremely tranquil place with a fountain right off of their cafe, and it is one of those, like, nice oases you can go to and escape the hustle and bustle and enjoy yourself. You were in attendance as well, right?
Right. It's a nice place to go for lunch, by the way.
And if you have to go for rehab, you want the garden rooms right overlooking the beautiful fountain and plantings. It really is impressive. Following morning, I was delighted to participate in the Greenwich Reform Synagogues Mizzouza Installation. This is a symbolic end to the construction of the congregation's new home on Orchard Street. There were, I would say, 100 folks in attendance at this. Very celebratory. It's a beautiful facility. If you haven't had a chance to visit it, it blends nicely into the landscape and has used the landscape to lend itself to the synagogue's mission in teachings. I would encourage all to stop by and take a look. Also on that day, the Greenwich Tree Conservancy and the Greenwich Parks and Rec Foundation celebrated the opening and the expansion of the Arboretum at Bruce Park. Mr. Toner, I know you were there for quite some time. And again, thanks to the Tree Conservancy, Joanne Messina, Leslie Lee, Mary Hall, Sue Baker, and all others who were there promoting this beautiful town resource. Last Tuesday, May 23rd, I had the honor of signing a sister-city agreement with the District of Shengsheng District, Hangzhou, China. Dr. Cheng Tao Jin was guest of honor here in Greenwich as part of the delegation led by Tao Guo, who is the Secretary-General of the Zhejiang International Hedge Fund Talent Association in Hangzhou. We expect that this relationship will blossom into further exchanges, not only in the area of business, but in education and culture, tentatively in the works. We had Fred highlight his collection, though, too, because of the connection.
And he offered to have his delegation come back to his home for a few weeks. They weren't able to accommodate him that time, but perhaps next week they will.
Yes, and your venue is one that they found greatly enticing, so thank you. I could say it in person. Normally, if you weren't here, I would just be saying it generally, but thank you. The next event that occurred Wednesday, the 24th, was a very busy day. We had the dedication and formal ribbon-cutting of the Greenwich Fire Department, which is now part of the Greenwich Public Safety Complex on Havemire Place. It was a culmination of many years of effort and work on the part of many people in support from not only the alphabet soup of governing bodies, the BET, the RTM, the PMZ, the HTC, the ARC, and I'm sure we could perhaps throw a few others in there. The Chamber was instrumental in supporting it as to the importance of having this presence. Mr. Raymer, I'd like to acknowledge you. You're one of the ardent folks for fire services. Thank you. But it really was nice for people to be able to tour the facility, and several of former First Selectmen were in attendance. Mr. Pearson, Mr. Bergstreser, Mrs. Prince, Mr. Margonat attended and were quite pleased to see it come to fruition. Chief Titsworth, who was chief for many decades, was also in attendance, along with former Chief Orsoa. So many of the folks who had been very acclimated to the old building were quite impressed with the facsimile reproduction of the new building, and we wish them many years of safe service in that home. Not to be outdone, the Silver Shield had an event that night, and it was to honor several of its members. Andrew Greco was the 2016 Silver Shield Association Officer of the Year. Also honored for their work were Sergeant Shockley, Detective Labassi, Detective Perouse, Officer Tar, Officer Swift, and Officer Wallace. Prior to the firehouse opening, there was the unveiling of the Greenwich Reads Together book, News of the World. Ken, you covered that very well. You perhaps will be the first to complete it and give your thoughts. And culminating that day, I attended, in selecting Marzullo was there as well, the 20th anniversary in benefit for the Friends of Autistic People. A longtime Greenwich resident, Richard Durani, and her husband Tibor, who head up this organization, recognized resident and fashion designer Tommy Hilfiger and his wife Dee for their support to this organization and for research into autism. This past weekend, there were several Memorial Day events. I believe there were six in total. Mr. Toner and I were very pleased to have attended the Cosco VFW post 10,012 ceremony on Strickland Road at their memorial, the Byram Vets Association Parade, the Ninth District Veterans Association and Glenville Volunteer Fire Company Parade, the American Legion Post 29 Dockside Service at Indian Harbor. There was the Byram Veterans Memorial at the Monument at McKinney Terrace, and of course, the Sound Beach Volunteer Fire Department Parade in Old Greenwich. At that event in Old Greenwich, a young woman who is graduating Greenwich High School, heading off to Northeastern, Anna Heavy, was recognized as a youth leader and active member of the GEMs Explorer Post. In Byram and Glenville, we were able to acknowledge another Greenwich resident who is retiring after 30 years of service to our nation in the U.S. Navy, and that's Captain Mark Turner. I did proclaim Sunday, May 28th, as Captain Mark Turner Day, and he's looking forward to remaining in New England and keeping his roots here in Greenwich, but his career brought him to assignments around the world, and most recently as Director of the Naval Staff College in Newport, Rhode Island. So again, congratulations to both Anna Heavy and Mark Turner. And not to be forgotten, I did get there all but a little wet and a little late. The Chickaha Many Memorial Ceremony did take place at Hamilton Avenue School yesterday at 1:00, and they completed the day's ceremonies. In other updates, with the lifting of the State Public Health Department Water Emergency, Aquarian is now enforcing the new sprinkler irrigation restrictions. Residents, including those who rely upon well water, are allowed to water their lawns two days per week. The specific calendar of watering are allowed on the Aquarian postcard, which many of you may have received. I brought one along. So this has been sent out to postal customers. Has everyone received this here? Just as a curiosity, did everybody get one? So right now, the way the program is working, if your residence, last digit of your residence is 02468, even numbers, Sunday and Wednesdays before 10 and after 6. If you're 1, 3, 5, 7, or 9, odd numbers, Saturdays and Tuesdays before 10 or after 6. And if you have no address number, Sundays and Wednesdays. This is all new and being evaluated, not just here in Greenwich, but through communities throughout the region, Darien, Duquesne, and Stamford. One of the things that I've heard from folks in the green industry is that they'd like to see modifications. Perhaps there isn't a need to start this so soon into the season. Correspondingly, they would like to see it expanded in the summer months, so July and August, perhaps to three days. So we're going to be continuing to work with those folks and the water company to balance it. But consumption, on the last call, I believe Greenwich is doing very well in its adherence to conservation, and for that, we're most grateful. Last Thursday, and the reason the meeting wasn't held last Thursday is I trekked up to New Britain, Connecticut, to the Connecticut Siting Council. As we are well aware, Eversource Energy has their application for a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need for the construction, maintenance, and operation of 115-volt kilovolt substation located here in Greenwich on Railroad Avenue, and two 115-kV transmission circuits extending approximately 2.3 miles between the proposed substation and the existing Cosco substation. The purpose of the meeting was, consider a request to reopen the docket based upon changed conditions pursuant to statutes. Representing the town of Greenwich legally is attorney David Ball from the firm of Cohen &amp; Wolf. As a quick summary, I trekked up there. It was a three-hour round trip for about 10 minutes of deliberations on a rainy day. It gave a lot of contemplating time in the car. But they granted that the docket be reopened, and they also did not limit it to just the project itself, but we can also focus on need, and I think that was a critical element to it. The council has set an aggressive hearing schedule. July 13th, they're going to be doing field reviews here in the town of Greenwich at 2:00 PM, and a public comment session in Greenwich at 6:30 PM. July 25th, there'll be an evidentiary hearing, which will begin in New Britain at 11:00 AM. According to legal, they do not have any deadlines set for discovery or for the filing of the prefiled testimony, but we're looking to get that confirmed very shortly. So stay tuned on that. Another issue of similar concern, again, these are actions that are driven by external entities in many cases. Tomorrow evening, we received communication from, this is from the Sierra Club, but it was, they sent out concerns about it, but it pertains to Westchester County Airport privatization. There's a public meeting to hear directly from the consultant who prepared and issued a request for proposal seeking a private operator at the Westchester County Airport. That's tomorrow evening, Wednesday, May 31st, 7:30 PM. Ry Brook Village Hall, 938 King Street, Ry Brook. This is not too far up the road from Blind Brook High School. If you come up Glenville Street and you make a right onto King Street, past Blind Brook, past the condo development, you'll find the Ry Brook Village Hall. And this meeting was arranged by Westchester County legislator David Gelfarb, who represents Ry Brook, Portchester, Harrison, and is being hosted by the Village of Ry Brook Airport I think that concludes updates unless, did you have something? You attended, or did I mention it? We both attended the same thing, so we attended autism. You attended something.
It was an all-day seminar for the Commission on Aging on the healthy, or the age-friendly and dementia-friendly plan of the Commission on Aging. Interesting.
Great, and thank you for attending that, John, and keeping us apprised. Finally, this just is impromptu, but it jumped out at me today. We mentioned Nathaniel Witherell twice today in our updates. For those of you who have access to or read the Wall Street Journal, there's an article on page A3. It's titled Nursing Care Bills Pressure Taxpayers. And what it's highlighting is a community-run nursing home in Nantucket, Massachusetts, and how they have pushed to have it privatized, and yet, the care and the economics have not worked out with the privatization, and that the fact that the community takes ownership and has had ownership has given it greater stability and quality. And I think in many ways, reading this, you'll come to appreciate all the work and all the discussion and debate and analysis that Greenwich has done to arrive at a decision that I think has been affirmed over and over again, that we have a really tremendous model here with Nathaniel Witherell's skilled nursing facility. But I would encourage you to take a look at it and give kudos to our folks here in Greenwich who made Witherell what it is. Okay, that concludes updates. Under old business, at our last meeting, we had a discussion about the establishment of a committee to review a proposal to add the Board of Education to Section 66 of the Town Charter. That section also references Section 67. In many ways, they're compatible. There was also a request at that meeting to solicit feedback from the Board of Education. That was communicated to the chair and shared with its members and resulted in a meeting that took place last Thursday evening at the Glenville School. In reference to that meeting, I received a communication Friday, May 26th. I believe it was shared with the board, but I will read it because it was a request that Mr. Marzullo had made to get feedback from them, the Board of Ed, on two separate issues. His issue was Section 38, which was the proposal recommended by the committee that was established last year, which referenced changing the composition of the board, and that proposal is basically been set aside by this Board of Selectmen at the moment while a second question has been raised. So this is what the letter said back to us. "In response to your letter, May 11th, the Board of Education considered the proposed changes to Section 66 and 67, Home Rule provisions of the Charter of the Town of Greenwich at our regular meeting. We consulted Mr. Wayne Fox, town attorney. He advised, quote, 'The Board has no authority, no jurisdiction, or any formal legal role to play in any such proposed change. It certainly has the right to review it, discuss it, and issue a sense of the Board resolution with respect to the concept, but it has no legal role or authority with respect to its adoption. The only question is whether your Board has an opinion on the topic,' end quote. According to his office, accordingly, his office assisted to prepare the following sense of the meeting resolutions to properly express our views. Regarding Section 66, quote, 'It is the sense of the meeting that any Home Rule action which would affect the existence, mode of selection, composition, rights, powers, privileges, or duties of the Board shall not become effective unless such action is approved at a referendum,' end quote. Regarding Section 67, quote, 'It is the sense of the meeting that any Home Rule action affecting the Board of Education may be initiated only by affirmative vote of a majority of the members of the Board of Education,' end quote. As you will note, these resolutions mirror the language of Section 66 and 67, Home Rule provisions in plain and understandable English. Dr. Gaetan Francis moved to table these resolutions in the Board by a majority agreed. Therefore, we have no current plans to provide opinion or advice on proposals to add the Board of Education to Home Rule provisions of the Charter. Also relevant to the topic, Ms. Laura Erickson moved, quote, 'It is the sense of the meeting to accept the recommendations contained within the Charter Revision Committee report on the proposal to amend the method of election of Board of Education members whereby three Board of Education members are elected in one municipal election cycle and five Board of Education members are elected in the next municipal election cycle,' end quote. That motion failed. The vote was 6-2. I hope this information proves helpful to the Board of Selectmen and the tenet Charter committees, and that was copied to members of the Board and actually to this Board. So at the last meeting, this Board voted to establish a committee to look at Section 66 and 67. We had four people who served on the prior committee, each who have committed their willingness to serve on the next committee. Those individuals' names are Mr. Bill Finger, Mr. Barry Rickert, Mr. Brian Paldoonis, and Mr. Peter Von Braun. We also needed to fill the fifth spot, which had been held in esteem by Ms. Joan Cottrell, who passed since the report was issued. And so the desire was to find a person who would balance out the committee. In the minds of some, the committee should be more balanced to reflect the registration of our electorate. I did reach out to Ms. Alexis Vulgaris, who serves on the RTM from District 6. She is an unaffiliated voter and one who has been involved with our schools. Alexis was very interested in the question and very interested in serving and thinks she could provide a very broad and diverse perspective to the subject, so I would welcome her appointment to this committee. Just for point of information, as of April 30th, the rough percentage, without using fractional interest, has the town electorate, about 36% being unaffiliated, means they recognize no party. 35% are Republican-affiliated and 27% are Democrat, with 2% reflective of other. So this committee having 2, 2, 1, 2R, 2U, 1D comes the closest to having a group that reflects the broader electorate. Again, so the committee voted, the Board voted last meeting to have a committee. The item before us is to name the committee with their charge, and as it states in the agenda, the proposal would be to, of the committee, is to review. And we say review because they've, in reviewing, taken a broad body of legal research, but review a proposal to add the Board of Education to Section 66. And in that sense, Mr. Fox, I would say 67 because 67 is referenced in 66. So 66 slash 67 of the Charter. In particular, the establishment of a committee to consider a requirement that any change to the mode of selection, composition, rights, powers, privileges, or duties of the Board of Education require a referendum. So I would so move. So then we'll have discussion.
Wait, wait, on what?
What's on our agenda today, Mr. Marzullo? The motion is to...
Yes, I have, before that, Mr. Chairman, I have two motions myself.
Okay, well, the Chair has made the motion on what's on the agenda. We can debate the motion on the agenda. You can amend it. You can amend it, but that's what's before us. It's been moved and it's been seconded.
So I can't make the motions? Is there anything?
Well, we can debate this motion first. This is what's on the agenda. To establish a committee, we actually voted to establish the committee last time. The vote was.
True, but if.
So this is to appoint Mr. Von Braun, Mr. Paldunis, Mr. Rickert, Ms. Vulgaras, Mr. Finger, to go and research and review this question and report back to us.
My motions, though, prior, could affect that, though. So, in order. Can I get a?
The motion before us is the motion that's being debated. It's on those people for this committee.
So I can't make the motion?
No, there's only one motion. Do you want to amend this motion?
Well, it's not, no, no, I want to not get to that motion, is my point.
But it's on the agenda, so it's.
Well, it's all related. It's all related under Old Business.
Is there further discussion on the committee?
The committee itself? Yes, I have lots of discussion on the committee itself, once we get to that.
Well, that's what's the motion before the Board, is to have these five people.
So if I wanted to make a motion, once again, to table this issue, how do I get that on record?
You did that at the last meeting, I thought.
I'd like to do it again.
Well, that motion's not before the Board. This motion is. So do you have anything to say on this motion? That's what's before the Board.
Yes, I don't want it.
Then you register that in your vote. Do you have any comment on the motion that you?
Oh, yes, I, well, I do have comment on the motion. I think, yes, on this motion specifically.
Right, okay.
Before the Board. Okay, so in turn, the motion, what I was going to suggest is we, once again, table this, and I do so because, in regards to this motion, that on last week, the Board, as you noted, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Education voted 6-2 against a changing of town charter. I would like to quote former Board Chair Laura Erickson, who is here. She was quoted in the paper. I'm paraphrasing. "The current system may not be perfect, but what it does, it forces us to take off the political hat and focus on what really matters." I would like to also state, too, former Chairman Barbara O'Neill is also here, who had, who voted with the majority, who also laid out concerns. I would also like to quote, Mike is also here, in terms of representing PTAC and talking about how some say the current system is not effective, but would like to provide, you know, facts that, now, I bring all this up because this was a bipartisan vote of the Board of Education. We had members of the PTAC representation also there. So the, those are my reasons that are going to be voting against this motion. I also have questions, if when we get to it, too, who constitutes the actual committee members. Mr. Von Braun and Mr. Paldunis, I believe, and once again, we have to, I think, check this out, whether or not they're going to be running for the Board of Education. So if we know that, would they be people we want to put on with such a bias? I don't know. That's a bit of a conflict. Now, I can't, I did not reach out to them personally to see if they were running for the Board of Education, but if we, if they are, I think we should have a discussion on that, whether we want them sitting on the Board. That's ultimately going to decide. So that's the motion. I mean, that's, that's my points there. My second point is, in terms of a motion, if you will, is, once again, having discussion about whether or not we should not form the committee again and bringing this directly to the RTM for a vote. So those are two things I repeated, you know, that I said last time, but how to get this in under this, I don't know. That's pretty.
So the Board expressed itself, the Board of Education, on Section 38, but Section 38 is not actively before the Board. It was put aside to address this fundamental question, which is essentially, should the Board of Ed have the same rights and privileges as the Board of Selectment, the Board of Education, I mean, the Board of Estimative Taxation in the RTM, that any change affecting it, affecting it have to go to the voters? That's simply what this committee will be charged to look at. Should any change affecting the Board of Education be required to go to the voters to approve or disapprove? So to me, it's really Democratic with a small d, saying, do we want the electorate to be engaged and involved on changing the current system with regard to the Board of Education? Right now, where it stands, that decision is left to the RTM. 116 people constitute a majority. This would open it up to 33,000 people. Anyone who's registered to vote would have a say. That's simply what we're talking about. We're not talking about this year, the composition of the Board. We're thankful we received your opinion. Thank you. That's on a subject that was moved aside until this question was addressed. And this question, of course, has to be reviewed by the committee and report back to us. So very tedious, very deliberative process. Is there any further comment on this? I will call the question. The motion, again, is to appoint the five members to committee to review a proposal to add the Board of Education to Section 66, 67 of the town charter. In particular, in particular, to consider the requirement that any changes to the mode of selection, composition, rights, powers, privileges, or duties of the Board of Ed require a referendum. All in favor?
But, Mr. Chairman, point of, are we voting on the individuals that you just mentioned? Because I did, or, you know?
Yes, we are. We voted on the committee at the last meeting, and we said very explicitly, we were looking for someone to fill the fifth spot that was either an unaffiliated, a Democrat, and ideally female. And we found that in Alexis Vulgaras. She happens to be a member of the.
So the members that are, do you have any knowledge whether or not the two are going to be seeking?
The only comment I heard this morning during the recess was from Ms. O'Neill, that she had understood that Mr. Von Braun may be seeking the, I have not heard that from anybody else. So I, I can't go on hearsay. If he were to be, then I think that's a matter to be discussed, but again, he's not deciding on the composition of the Board. He's going to be participating in a discussion on whether changes to the Board should go to referendum. I think we need to be very clear what we are voting on and what we're not voting on. We're not voting on changing the composition of the Board of Ed today or establishing a committee to do so. We're simply saying, if there were to be a decision on that, should that decision, if approved by the RTM, go to referendum for the public to say yes or no? I'm sorry, Ms. O'Neill, since I mentioned you, I want to.
Yes, I speak to order, then quote Mrs. Erickson about her statement about Mr. Share. I don't want to single out.
Okay, well, again, those were informal conversations, but since it was introduced in the public meeting, I'm answering, I don't know truthfully from, all I know is what I was heard today, and so I'm hearing from second-hand sources.
Make sure that you include both statements about Mr. Share and Mr. Von Braun.
Okay, well, the one.
What statement? I'm confused.
I'm not sure which, how Mr. Share relates to it. I mean, he is, he is.
Well, you just, Mr. Marzullo is questioning makeup on the committee because of people who might run. You said, I said, that Peter Von Braun might run, but also what I'm saying is that you also heard Mrs. Erickson say that Mr. Share might run. So I think both statements.
Okay. I mean, again, it's, lesson learned is it's hearsay. We don't know, but to my knowledge, regarding Mr. Von Braun, he had expressed an interest in continuing to serve on the successor committee, as did Mr. Finger and Mr. Rickert and Mr. Paldunis, but that's all I know. I don't know, again, this is all second-hand. But I get your point. You want to make sure that the second-hand comments are equally disseminated, although Mr. Share has nothing to do with this committee. He's, he's running for the Board, if that's what you're saying. He's running. So again, we're getting, we're really getting off the substance of the question.
But I think this is, I think this is substantive in terms, if we, if there are two, because I heard also, once again, in terms of Mr. Paldunis, if we have two out of the three, four, five people that, that want to serve on this committee, that will be running for the Board of Education conceivably now, I think it's going to, I think that is something we need to discuss.
Well, we have no facts, Mr. Marzullo. You're operating on second-hand.
So how about we call them?
You're operating on second-hand information.
Okay, let's call them and ask them. Take two, five minutes to ask.
I have no knowledge to know that Mr. Paldunis or Mr. Von Braun is running. I do know what they've communicated is they'd like to serve on the committee. I think, you know, to allow for second-hand information to drive town business is to.
That's why I'm saying, let's call them.
Well, that's not before us today. I'm going to, again, call the question. Those in favor of appointing these five people signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Abstentions?
So we didn't take the five minutes to call?
So.
Okay.
So the vote is 2, 1, 0. Mr. Finger, Ms. Der Paldunis, Mr. Rickert, Mrs. Vulgaras, and Mr. Von Braun.
And for the record, please, for the members, I would have liked to check that out on that. I mean, we have that noted.
Okay, under New Business, the Bruce Museum is here to discuss and request approval for amendments to the Bruce Museum Management Agreement. Joining us today is their attorney, Mr. Bruce Cohen.
Hello, Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Cohen, I just wanted to acknowledge, I had the opportunity to spend some time on your road with your wife during the fire that affected your street, so she and I had a nice conversation.
My wife particularly wanted me to thank you for arranging to get her back into her house.
She was very patient.
Bruce Cohen, representing the Bruce Museum. You'll remember the Bruce and its plans for expansion coming before you last year on two MI referrals, and at that time, I told you that this was going to be a long process, that we would be coming back to this Board as we headed toward the end. Those approvals that you granted, referring those MIs to P&amp;Z, were done at the beginning of the project. We've done quite a bit since then, and we are now, hopefully, at the end of at least the land use approval portion of the, of the project. The, the things that we've been doing since we last appeared before you are important, I think, in terms of the progress of the plans and where we are. We've been before planning and zoning for a preliminary site plan approval, which was granted. We went before the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special exception and necessary variances, which were granted. We went before the ARC, who reviewed very carefully the plans for the expansion, including lighting and landscaping, and that was approved. We've been through a kind of a lengthy process, but a very necessary one, through the aegis of Mr. Brannion, who noticed when we first approached him to have this matter put before you, that it would have been a very good idea to have the senior town department heads take a look at these plans. And so he arranged a series of meetings with department heads. So we've met with these plans, with the Director of Parking Services, the Director of Parks and Rec, the Town Attorney, Commissioner of Public Works, as well as the Tree Warden. And so this has been through a fairly extensive series of reviews and approvals, and I believe the plans that are before you tonight, that we filed this morning, that we have filed, reflect the various changes and inputs that we have received from these, the alphabet group, that you, as you put it, Ms. Tessie, as well as the, the senior staff folks in this, in the town. What the final plan is, is reflected in this site plan. The existing building is shown in yellow and the addition is shown in darker ink. One important change that was made as a result of input from department heads had to do with the MI that we received from this Board, to lease a strip of land from the state. You may recall that. We had parking that extended onto a strip of land that had been taken by the state for I-95. We were encouraged to try to redesign that parking so as to avoid having to ask the state for, for the lease. And with a little help from our engineers and our, our parking engineer, we were able to do that. So this plan now reflects the fact that we no longer require that lease, and so we will be withdrawing from consideration that, that portion of the MI. The other MI that was referred by this Board to P&amp;Z, we will, subject to what happens today, go forward with, and that has to do with the expansion plans themselves. There have been, in addition to that change, there have been a couple of other changes that I think are important. Before I get to those, I'd kind of like to give you a little of the background or remind you of a little of the background about the Bruce Museum and what's, what's before you and who's before you today. As you know, Mr. Bruce, Robert Bruce, the great benefactor of the town, gave Bruce Park to the town in 1909 as part of his will, and one of the conditions was that the town would be entitled to the, to his dwelling house, which has become the museum, provided that the town continued to maintain it as a natural history and art museum. And the town meeting at that time, before the representative town meeting came into effect, the town meeting accepted those terms. And since 1909, and up until 1992, the town, through a separate Board, ran the Bruce Museum. I served on that Board for a number of years, which is how I became most interested in, in the Bruce Museum. In 1991, plans were created to make an addition to the museum, which were accepted by the RTM. That was the genesis of the existing management agreement. And the Charter at that time, Section 81A of the Charter, was amended to allow the town, in effect, to hand off its obligations of operating the old Bruce House as a museum to a 501(c)(3) entity, and that entity is called the Bruce Museum Incorporated. And it's the Bruce Museum Incorporated that has operated the museum and, in large part, funded its operations since 1992, under that agreement. Last year, the RTM saw fit to extend that management agreement under the First Amendment for an additional 25 years. And so to address the next century, let's say, the Bruce Museum has put together these plans and has entered into very extensive fundraising activities to pay the cost of building this addition, the major portion of which I think I can explain to you by showing this section. And this section is, in effect, a view of the new building and the old building sliced right through the middle, showing the center courtyard, which will be a landscape courtyard. And this is what, this is how it's going to look. Do one at a time. So, the new building will be, in effect, constructed downhill, and that will allow the new entry to be at grade for the first time in the history of the museum, so as to facilitate. to facilitate access, to become handicapped accessible, and to create a new first-floor entry that doesn't exist right now. Galleries will be added, educational spaces will be added, and importantly, storage and exhibit preparation spaces will be added. This is a view going from Museum Drive, slicing across the property to Steamboat Road. And the essence of the plan remains the same as you saw it last, last year when you approved the expansion plan. Now it's become, as a result of the review by these, the town agencies and department heads, much more specific. And we have filed with your, with the application for you today, a complete set of the engineering and architectural plans, which, subject to your approval, will become a part of the amendment to the management agreement that must be approved by the RTM. The, I wanted to talk to you about a couple of important changes that we've made to, so that you understand some of the kinds of things that, that we've been dealing with in terms of the land use process. One of the, one of the important issues to the Planning and Zoning Commission had to do with the relationship between the museum property and downtown Greenwich. And there is a relationship because of the property that goes downhill to Steamboat Road and continues up quite a distance toward the railroad tracks. And one of the important issues to the Planning and Zoning Commission was to modify those plans in a way that would provide connectivity between downtown Greenwich and the museum and Bruce Park, of which the museum is, is a part. And so we've done that. And we've done that with the cooperation and approval of the Town Tree Warden, who has approved and, and seen and made suggestions to all of the landscape plans. This is a view that the architects have created of what, what Steamboat Road, looking up at the museum, appears to be. And this is the, the better view because it's in a winter time view. And this is what you see right now. And it's kind of forbidding, and it's kind of a tricky walk up the hill. It's proposed to widen these walkways, widen the entryway, create an area, areas where exhibits of sculpture can be, can be shown, and to, and to bring this portion, the north portion of Steamboat Road, up to the museum. And the accessway will, will split off so that people who need to get to the back door of the museum, staff, can, can go that way. And people who would like to take a walk along Bruce Park can continue to walk this way around the museum. So this, we think, is an important change. I think everyone that's seen it, including the Architectural Review Committee, has liked it. I'd like to talk to you specifically now about what's before you today. There, there are essentially two things before you today, but I'll break them down into subheadings. The, the first thing that's before you today is what, what we've been calling the Second Amendment to the Management Agreement. This is, the reasons that it's the Second Amendment is the First Amendment did, extended the life of the management agreement for an additional 25 years, and that was approved by the RTM last year. The management agreement that's before you today and for which we seek your approval does essentially three important things. One, first and foremost, it permits the expansion of the museum. Well, that's necessary because it's town property, even though the, the Bruce Museum Inc. is building on it. So it's necessary that we do that, and it's necessary that the town, RTM approve it. The second thing that it does is that it coordinates over, let's say, excess parking, parking that's needed for larger events, with the Town Director of Parking Services. And we've incorporated a parking management plan, which has been filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission, subject to their approval, that provides for how the museum will access town parking lots for those events when it's needed. Where we will obviously schedule events so that we're not going to conflict with other town events, like the town party over the weekend, which took just about every space in sight. And we'll provide the Director of Parking Services with information three months in advance of any need that the museum has. So that's the second thing that it, it needs. And then the third important thing is, there's always been a question about who is doing what in terms of maintenance of the grounds and the building, and as between the Director of Parks and Recreation and the museum. And we've, with the help of, of Mr. Siciliano, we've worked out, I, I think, a pretty good arrangement of clarity in terms of who's doing what. So those are the three things that the Second Amendment does and for which we need RTM and your approval. The second item that's before you tonight, ours today, are several amendments to the parking regulations that will permit a couple of things to happen. And they are specified in the application that we made to you. First of all, as of right now, the parking regulations do not permit parking on the north side of Museum Drive. We're proposing to eliminate that restriction so as to allow 15 spaces to be included in a way that will not make the street more narrow, nor create an incursion into the parkland. We reviewed this with the director, with the Commissioner of DPW, and she has reviewed the, the design that Redness and Mead has come up with and approved it. And we believe that this will work very well and will allow the museum access to these spaces for regular use. Two other changes are required to the parking regulations. One, which would allow the installation of four-hour meters, so as to obviate the possibility of commuter parking there. And the second, or the third change to the parking regulations, which would allow overtime parking on the museum property itself, which is not allowed. So those are the three changes, and they're, although I note that only two of them managed to get on the, your agenda today, I think that you, you may be able to consider all three and their modifications to just the parking ordinances that I mentioned. So again, Ms. Tessie, members of the board, in order for us to proceed to the next step, and there are two next steps, the first is to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for final site plan approval, which will incorporate all of the information and a lot more that I've talked about. And then finally, to go to the RTM for approval of the management agreement. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. With me are, are, are engineer, are members of the museum, Managing Director of the museum, our park, our traffic engineer, and we'll be glad to address any questions that you may have.
You could just, for clarity, review the three items that you, in terms of their sections, so...
Are you talking about the parking regulations?
Well, we have listed the amendment to the Bruce Museum Agreement. Then we have modification Section 14-5 Schedule II of the Greenwich Municipal Ordinance.
Yes.
And I believe in looking at the memo or letter, letter dated May 23rd, that is where the, the reference, one item not referenced on the agenda but incorporated in the letter. I was trying to see 14 points...
The one that's missing, Ms. Tessie, is 14-4 Schedule I or Roman I.
Because we have 14-5 Schedule II and 14-7 point, 7.6 Schedule 7.
Those are correct. The one that didn't make it is Schedule I, and that's the one that, right now, prohibits parking on the north side of Museum Drive.
Okay. So just for discussion purposes, we would need to take that up to add that particular section?
Yes.
So we need to see the motion to add that particular section in this letter?
Second.
So it was moved in second, without objection. I just want that to be clear. And so then, if there are any questions, I think perhaps the best way to address it is to go through each item, impose the question on each item. Did you have a question?
No.
Yeah?
No.
Good. I just wanted to just comment on the parking because I think it's an issue that draws often many opinions on the part of people in this town. I think, you know, you've worked very collaboratively with the town administrator and the various departments over many, many weeks. I wanted to acknowledge that effort in looking to maximize really what is a finite resource. We've spent a lot of time over the last several months talking about the town and what makes it a desirable place. And I think there's universal appeal that the museum does, and we all want the museum to be successful. And part of that success is the ability for people to come and be able to park, while at the same time not excluding those other amenities that it, that are down there, such as the Bruce Park Playground. And that's another concern that I think our director, from what I've heard from Mr. Brannion, has looked to balance and, as proposed, done so. So I just want to thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. So in terms of...
Thank you, Bruce.
In terms of, that's maybe our legal folks here, in terms of votes on each item, we're to vote, not globally. So the first item would be to approve the Second Amendment to the Bruce Museum Management Agreement, correct? Okay. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one would be the request to modify Section 14-4 Schedule...
So, Mr. Trin, the wording of the first, you said the Second Amendment was what again? What we just voted on? It's to permit, not the expansion part?
That's, that's the management agreement.
It's just the management, okay. Got it.
The next one is the one we just voted to add, which was in the letter.
Yep.
So these two...
14, but, yep.
So this is, the next item is the request to modify Section 14-4 Schedule I of the Greenwich Municipal Ordinance.
Which, in turn, does that, that permits the expansion part? Is it the MI part or no? I mean, this is around a little...
So it's the parking on the north side of the...
That's the parking part. Got it. Yeah, yeah. All right. So number one, two, three.
Is there a motion on that?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
The sidewalks are, that are in the area, they're going to be maintained, aren't they?
I am sorry, I didn't hear them.
The sidewalks? Are they going to be maintained?
Indeed. Yes, they are. And, and depending on the location, it's, the museum depend, will, will maintain some, the town will maintain others. It's, and, and again, the management agreement is pretty clear about who does what, and it's, I think, a good addition because it hadn't been clear before.
Okay. So is there a motion? Can I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The next, and it's referenced as new on the letter, new request to modify Section 14-5 Schedule II of the Greenwich Municipal Ordinance. Is there a motion on that?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, the new request to modify Section 14-7.6 Schedule 7A of the Greenwich Municipal Ordinances. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes our deliberations.
Thanks, Bruce. Thank you very much.
Good luck and continued success.
Good luck, guys. Good luck.
Is this supposed to be RTM?
It's Planning and Zoning.
The agreement has to be approved by the RTM.
Look.
Love of the language about money.
Bring that up again, yeah.
Did Leslie highlight that for you?
No, I highlighted it myself.
Did he have family? He's got a family, he gave it to the town.
He had a sister. I don't think he was married, Robert Bruce.
I don't know.
I remember he, you know...
Hey, Bruce, go, Mr. Cohen.
Excuse me, Suzanne.
Bruce. Was, I'm just curious, was Mr. Bruce, did he have any heirs? I'm curious, he, to the history, he just left this to the town? He didn't, I'm, yeah.
He didn't have any heirs.
No.
He left this to the town.
So he had nobody, sisters, brother, anybody?
He had a sister. He had a sister who I think predeceased him, so there wasn't anyone that we're aware of.
Who ends up with the land that we stock on the museum? I've always wondered about that.
Thank you, Jen.
He was an industrialist.
He made money, lots of it.
He gave the, the old town hall, he gave, that one it references his sister, his sister, Sarah, was referenced in that.
That's her sister.
Challow, do you know?
Good.
She's the sister-in-law of, of Elaine Chaff. You know them. She's, she's something, oh my God. You know her.
Okay. Item six, nominations and appointments. Any, do you have any? No?
Nope.
We're still looking for P&amp;Z. I did hear back from Mr. Bergweger. He said he was not interested at this time.
Yeah. I suggested that they go to the RTM and, or RMA and make a presentation. Looking for people.
Yeah. Okay. So the, no appointments and nominations. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing several property tax appeals and settlement? So moved.
Is there a second? There is a second.